Move into the consent agenda, including approving the minutes from the June 25th, 2025, regular meeting. All right, the board will then go into action items, only two items. One is approving the list of bills and wires in the amount of $2,955,115 and 32 cents, followed by adopting the fiscal year 27 long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan in accordance with Minnesota statutes 2023, section 123B 595. We will then close out our meeting with miscellaneous concerns. Thank you. And I think maybe since we don't need to do any action when it comes to the reports, let me share a little report about the training that we had when we went to Pennsylvania. Learned a lot, learned a lot about technology and how technology and artificial intelligence can be used to help us be more efficient and more organized. I'm not sure if you had had a chance to look at my report when I emailed it, but what I sent you were some slides. And the slides were from a couple of different PowerPoints that we were able to view at that training that were really impressive. And one of the most important ones was the realization that for 150 years, we've been doing a paradigm of education, which is like the industrial age. It was created in the late 1800s, designed to treat students like widgets in a factory. When you're in a factory, which you have, as time is a constant, you work from nine to five or eight to six, and you have to produce in a certain amount of time, so many cars or so many gadgets or widgets or widgets. The new paradigm is time becomes the variable. And we say it doesn't matter if you're in third grade, fourth grade, or fifth grade. We're going to work with you where your end. So we don't look at, okay, nine years have gone by, so you should now be done the fourth grade and entering fifth. Well, maybe that's not true for math. And you need to work more in fourth grade math so you can catch up. The goal in the 1800s was to sort students, to weed them out into select talents. If you weren't talented or educated enough, you might be out the door, working on digging ditches by the time you were in fifth or sixth grade or on the farm. The new shift with time as a variable, we develop all students and develop their talent. And we can't do that if you say, you're in fourth grade, too bad if you didn't pass math and learn it, you're going to fifth. You need to work on each individual student with a plan for each one. So it's a paradigm shift, getting away from when students learn something and whether they learn it well to whether or not they learn it and we keep working on it until they do. And then when they learn it, we can move them on to the next step, not moving them forward before they're ready. And we can use technology and artificial intelligence to help with that. So learn quite a bit. And we'll be starting to do a lot of that this fall.
I really enjoyed looking at the slides. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Learned a few, quite a few amazing things about that. Then if I could refer you to, and I think what we'd like to do is wait till Quiskis here so we can officially share that with the community watching and then have at least a fourth person to see the official report that you got. Look at that, good timing. Yeah. All right, we can now do the rest.
What a good timing to say that on, Mike.
We can do roll call.
You just said your name before you walked in.
And while there's a little net dusting, if you want to,
Okay.
If you haven't already shared. It was our discussion.
Mike Barrett Chair.
Yeah.
Chris Gordon Vice Chair. Nicole Disarly Clerk. Amanda Yeh. Robert McLean Treasurer. Doug Douglas Jack Disarly Director. Tina Stately Director. Here. Thomas Barrett Director. Tim Wood Superintendent.
Amanda Yeh, Nick Witch.
Hey, everybody had a chance to look through the agenda? I have one thing to add on the miscellaneous, just on just like a discussion here. Yeah, yeah.
Under miscellaneous?
So, yeah.
Okay.
It's a resolution that was tried, and I don't know if they, if you saw this, made.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I just wanted to have a little conversation. I don't know what you guys think. That'll be in miscellaneous.
On the what?
On this resolution?
Yeah.
Do you want to see it?
Did you give anyone?
Did I?
No. Yeah, okay.
No.
Anything else? Anybody need to add anything or? It's not only a motion to approve the agenda.
And this is just under miscellaneous?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Chairman Barrett, all motion to approve.
Okay, I'm motion great disarly. I'll sit. Second, yes. Further discussion. Hearing on all of the affairs AI. I, I, oldest. With you. Public Commons and Delegations, we have anything, no? My two kids donated.
Say we got two young people over there, yeah.
How long mean?
Those are your kids over there.
Okay, reports then.
Thank you. Let's, in the interest of time for these two gentlemen, if we could let them take the floor now and share a long strategic plan to meet the facility needs, which will then meet student needs in special education. For Hinkley.
Thank you. We're going to try and keep this to a relatively short presentation with a lot of information, so there can be questions at the end. Move through it quickly. You hopefully have in your packet a letter that I wrote to Superintendent Boots and the board related to some population shifts that we're seeing in our students, especially those with high support needs. So this is kind of the culmination of a few months worth of work that Chris and I have been doing along with a few other folks to do some planning around how we can best design some facility space that will meet the needs of students that are showing up with those high support needs. So this will be a general summary of the letter that's from you as well. Really quick overview of the proposal. We are looking at approximately seven and a half million dollars worth of renovation of currently underutilized space of the secondary complex. About five and a half million of that would be in design and construction costs and another $2 million in soft costs like the furniture and materials. And we're hopeful that it would come in under that, but that's the the numbers that we've been given preliminarily at least. The purpose of the presentation today to demonstrate those, the current need and then the future needs that we're looking at, describe the planning process we've used and then how it will address the impacts and and any accommodations that might need to be made to the process. So since 2016, we've seen year over year increasing student needs coming into our preschool and kindergarten classrooms. We have more and more of our students who have higher and higher needs. The space we know at Red Lake Elementary Complex is maxed out. Every spring, we are kind of arm wrestling among administrators to figure out who's going to get the one classroom that might be able to be used for something else. We've had special ed programs in spaces that are really not designed for special ed programs. We just don't have a ton of space left over there. And there's no current appropriate spaces for the level of need that we are seeing from these students here at the secondary complex. And we're primarily talking about students who are qualifying for special education as either autistic, so on the autism spectrum disorder, or emotionally and behaviorally disordered. So just as an example of these high support needs, in 2016, we had three programs that are considered level three at the elementary complex. This coming school year, we're going to have seven of those programs in that same complex, right? And you partner that with the fact that nearby level four programs are either full themselves or unavailable. Some of them won't even have a conversation with me about tuitioning our students in because they need to hold their spaces for their own student populations. And honestly, the two nearest, Bemidji isn't interested, they are always full in their level four programs. And Pon down in Walker has a level four program. And just the sheer logistics of transporting kids there and back would be a pretty big challenge. And given that we're talking about really high needs kids, right? They don't always independently ride the bus all that well. So our overall child count in the last five years has increased by 18%. And in that same 18% time, that increase, the biggest increases in our population of students with autism spectrum disorders, which has almost doubled, had a 95% increase since 2019. So you can see the trend that we've been working with on, and it's probably hard to see up here, but the mid-orange color, this the one that jumps way up towards the top, that's our six to 11-year-old population with autism. So right now, if you were to look at it in a timeline across 3K all the way to transition age, 21 years old, our population of high-need students with autism spectrum look a little bit like a snake swallowing a beach ball. Right? The, the six through 11-year-olds are going to move all the way through our system in that big group. And then we expect that it's going to peak in about two years and then start coming back down slightly, but probably not a whole lot, given what we're seeing from birth records and helping grow referrals for our, our birth to So we need to plan for that aging cohort. We've got space for them at the elementary right now, but if our overall population continues to grow, that's going to become an issue as well. So we talked about two spaces here at the secondary complex that could potentially be repurposed. Right now, our ALC is in the old cafeteria down at the way end of the building. And there's some HVAC space there, Tyler's office and storage and things immediately adjacent, so that it could become a bigger space. And then currently where we have the band, e-gaming and boiler area, which is the other old cafeteria space, could, is larger and could potentially house our autism program. So Chris is going to talk a little bit about the planning that's been done. He and a few staff went on site visits to the other level four programs. And he's been our primary contact with the architect, so.
Yeah, so in the past, we've done with the cafeteria project and the elementary project addition over here, we've done site business. So we went this spring, we went to the Walker up north learning center, level four program in Walker. And with the principal there, her name was Don Castillo. And we walked the complex and we took a look at how they did layout, how they built it, their means and methods and how they serve the kids. And we also went, went down to Starbucks and went through their facility in Starbucks, Minnesota. Walked through and it was an older building, but they had really good means and methods that they use. We took ideas from these other sites, worked with the architect, like we did with the elementary tradition cafeteria. And we looked at utilizing space we already had within our building. We have a big building footprint, as you guys know, and it's just making it more functional for our needs in lieu of going out and building an addition. You know, already belly envelope here, you can build out through a fraction of the, the cost of the additions. Have renderings, we're going to go through a few here of what these layouts are going to look, look like and how they function.
Yeah, so we're talking basically about a level four program for emotional behavioral disorders, which would be secondary, sixth through 12 graders. And the difference between a level three and a level four, just to let everybody understands that, level four is a separate facility. So what we're talking about is kind of developing a school within a school that's not accessible to the rest of the school. That makes sense. So it'll be a closed off portion of the building specifically for kids with significant emotional behavioral disorders, around 4,500 square feet. It would be two full-size classrooms and then all of the support spaces that you need for that type of a program. And we've got some initial renderings from the architect. There will be changes along the way as we get more people involved in the conversation. But in general, if you are familiar with the space where the old cafeteria or the current ALC is, that's a good portion of the top parts of this picture. And then the HVAC and storage is kind of this bottom section. So it becomes these two big classrooms, sun three space, life skills space, office, math room, all of the sorts of things that you would need for that type of a program. The one build out that isn't part of the building envelope right now is this little vestibule here where we would want space for students to come in, leave their book bags or any other things that they brought with them and then be able to go into the location. And that's just because when you're working with students who have met the criteria for a level four emotional behavioral disorder program, you want to keep everything really safe and secure. And so the stuff they bring in with them stays in a space and they go on to the next block. The level four program for ASD is that larger space that would have four classrooms plus a large transition life skills space. And we're talking about adding potentially some outdoor playground space because this one would actually be K-12 programming for level four. So we'd have a K-2 classroom, a 3-5 classroom, a 6-8 and a 9-12. And that rendering looks like this. So if you can imagine the cafeteria, old cafeteria that's like right over there where we currently have the band room. And more of the e-gaming space, if you know where that is, it's kind of up in this area right here. This would be the what the footprint would end up looking like for the ASD program. So it would have its own separate entrance and exit, just like the EBD program would. It doesn't have to have that same level of security. So it doesn't have the lockers and like separate vestibule like the, that one does. But there's, you can see there's two partner classrooms here at the top, two here in the middle, and then a life skill space here in the top right corner. And that one's about 8,500 square feet. So overall, we would want this, these two programs to serve 36 to 48 students in an autism program and 12 to 18 students in an EBD program. The target would be 40 for ASD and 16 for EBD. That works really well with the ratios that we're required to have for number of staff and number of students. And it's, is really, those spaces aren't designed for us to really have 48 kids or 18 kids. That would be pushing it a little bit in terms of space. So this serves students with the most intensive needs while maintaining the availability of our other current programs. And it would help stabilize the secondary supports that we have in place because the higher the level of support need, the more individuals are spending time with that student or that group of students. So having them be provided all of their services in that separate space also allows the rest of the secondary complex to operate more efficiently with the level of support that they have. It would require some transition and some flexibility for a couple of years. We would need to relocate the ALC and the most logical space would be over to what we refer to as the TLC wing. That may require some additional minor remodeling. It is set up as classrooms right now, but once we were able to really identify exactly what that programming would look like in the future, there may be some more that needed to be done to make sure that it worked well for that population. And the band room that is currently in the old cafeteria, we'd have to go back to where the other half of the ALC is, where it used to be the band room. And then I think it's key to know that we're trying to build in flexibility to the process, that these spaces are being designed so they could be adapted in the future. If we don't, if we no longer need that much space for level four ASD programming, there will be relatively easy ways to incorporate some of those classrooms back into the secondary complex so that it's not empty space or underutilized space. So this is really local investment for immediate need. Talking about that seven and a half million dollars, the proposal would be that we utilize money from the general fund balance. That bypasses all of those delays that you end up with going to the state legislature for the funding. As you know, the elementary, it took about 15 years to get that. If we're talking 15 years, we might as well not be talking about it because those kids are all going to be transition aged by then. So that's the, the primary reason for the proposal that way. And it really does center on student need. Provides equitable access to those specialized learning spaces. Hopefully it's safer and more supportive environments for those kiddos. It does provide us opportunities to retain students in districts who may otherwise be going out to other level four programs. And it positions us as a regional leader in special education services. And anytime you're a regional leader, it means you're more likely to attract the highest level talent in those programs. That's right. There, there will be financial, positive financial impact after the expense, right? The more students you're able to retain. And Tim and I were talking earlier, one of the potential benefits is with some of those students who are the most disruptive at the secondary complex, having their own space, that's going to likely increase the climate and culture of the rest of the complex as well. So you might even end up retaining more students in the general population if you're working with these really high-needs kids in a separate separate facility. So there's no way to know exactly what that would look like, right? But we do see some potential there. So these are our highest need kiddos, but we're committed to every student's success. And that's why we feel like this proposal makes sense for moving forward in the district. And we did want to offer the ability to ask questions or write comments or concerns, but we are very, very willing to come back to a future meeting and have further conversation if you some time to digest and, and think through what we're proposing.
And the good news is we can afford this. And we'll be able to afford it as an investment, which I believe will make a difference. Not only for helping students succeed in school, but being able to keep more students in school as they are successful. Both students who are in the program and then the students who are feeling safer here because fewer disruptions. I agree with Dustin.
So I have a question.
Oh. This is the coolant and heating. I'm sure that would be addressed, but it's too hot near or she cold in here.
Yeah, we have a building automation system that we have now. So for the, this is a newer buildup, if you look at air conditioning in this, in this area. But at night we do what's called re-burging. So we purge the building to bring in 100% outside air. And then maybe started doing that, and if I have any more, yeah, this goes down 15% and circulated to the building.
Okay.
And that, and that solves a lot. That's all our buildings. This is a new system we worked on the last couple of years and have it based on. Because you can feel this area is air conditioned. I'm very comfortable.
But even with that system, how, like back, oh, I can only speak, like, let's say at the wolf. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so you said that we have the system everywhere. So we have a very hot, we purge the building. It's not air conditioning, but it's with the fresh air, we're purging the building.
Do you think that's working the whole place?
Yeah, it is. I mean, we're doing that if the the CAs know if the humidity is too high, there's sensors, there's a rainstorm coming in, it will skip the cycle.
Maybe we could do that, you know, those high-velocity fans with the frozen water jugs.
Yes, yeah, great idea.
And that money is air conditioned factored in?
It'll be factored in, yeah, for a new space. We'll put in new spaces in with, with we put air handling units on there with room for coils that we get at air. When you get the whole thing figured out and you get your bids back, sometimes you have to go through a value and engineering, think items out. And that's just something that we would want to consider taking on.
And we can continue to work with the Department of Commerce like we have been, see if we can get more grants, do more work. Because one of our projects does deal with air comfort levels. And we're getting to know those people pretty well. It always helps to.
Robert McLean had a question, said, what is the cost analysis of this project? Because I heard more cost remodel for ALC. So the total that we're looking at for the two remodeling projects that we just talked about is around seven and a half million dollars. We have not done a cost analysis for anything that might need to be done to the ALC at this point. It could function, and it does function right now, as classroom space in the TLC wing. And the ALC can move there without doing anything in terms of remodeling. The forward-looking projections, as we're really digging into career and college readiness and seeing that a lot of our kids want to do more hands-on, experience-based learning, those classrooms are not designed for that type of learning. And so if we were to in the future, look to remodel, we would come back with another proposal for those classrooms, to change them on. But always thinking about what, what direction we need to go to better serve the, the students.
Yeah, it looks good and it sounds like a need, you know what I mean? And you've got the money and I know it is, is it bonding you right now?
Coming year next.
I think so.
I thought I heard on.
Coming year, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Then again, you know, like you said, the turnaround.
Right, unless the legislature was willing to offer that money like right away.
Okay, send their chairman down.
Send chairman, yes.
There is no summer, summer seminar this year.
No.
No.
You're right.
So the only seminar we have is the leadership coming up in January. And I encourage all of us to go.
As soon as we got as soon as we got, pull the trigger, sooner the better, or?
The architects are ready to go as soon as we are. The timeline that they put out, assuming everything goes exactly the way that we want it to, the earliest they'd be able to start with the remodel is in February of 26 is what they were looking at. So the faster the decision, the faster we can get all of those things lined up and ready to go. The nice thing is since it's already within the building space, we can shift student programming around and they can do the remodeling during the school year. This isn't one of those that has to be done only during the summer. So it could start, could start as early as February, but we're, we recognize that's a pretty short turnaround.
It could look like most of it would be done in the summer though. Looking at the, you say May to September. Would be the actual work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
All right. For more reports, the finance report. Have you crewed to page 13? Thank you, guys. And on that particular report, I can share that you actually are showing.
Did you see Rob have a chat?
And actually, Rob isn't supposed to be participating. And actually, Rob isn't supposed to be participating technically.
He's listening in.
Yep, so. But. You can see what he, yeah. I'm not sure if you got my email, Rob. Are you in a public location?
Yes.
Can you cite the, the, what is a public location?
Right now, I'm in Fargo at the Panda Express.
We can't hear you. Can you ask, speak up a little bit?
I'm at the Panda Express in, uh, Fargo, North Dakota.
Oh, unfortunately, that's not a public building. In order to participate as a board member, you have, online, you have to be at a public meeting as per my email earlier today. Um, I can answer a question though that you've got here, so we just can't let you vote. Yeah, you're concerned, as am I, with the uncertainty of this current administration with the Department of Education and funding cuts. Um, so we're, we're definitely going to keep that in mind as we move forward because, and before we move forward, we might have more certainty, hopefully. But that is a concern, valid concern.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so looking at the finance report, one thing that, uh, I noticed right off the bat, which is encouraging, is that our cash flow is up and, uh, not only our cash flow or liquid, but our starting balance is about, you know, twenty-nine and a half million and our ending balance is twenty-seven million. So seven and a half more million in our ending balance, which is always a good sign. And everything else is in order, uh, as Willie always maintains with the financial report. So things look really good and really healthy. Moving on to the ADM report, I refer you to page one oh seven in Board Book. And basically what this tells us is that, and it's hard to read this, but we are, do recall from the, the meeting last month, I mentioned that we were up thirty to forty students, somewhere in there. But this report tells us is exactly that, the, um, adjusted daily membership. We look at the second to last page, this first document, page one oh seven is the elementary school. Second to last line, it says total ADM. We, uh, had five hundred twenty-eight students who, uh, are officially at the school district and we received funding for them. If you go to the next page, the backside, that's the, uh, early learning complex, hundred and twenty-six point one two students. Hard to come up with a one.
Point one two.
One two student, exactly. Um, but that's the number there. The next page is the, uh, Panima School, hundred and twenty-six point and a quarter almost of a student. And the next page is the secondary complex, three hundred and thirty-five and change. Basically, there's no comparison that you can look at on this, this one takes a look at last year. But when we looked at it compared to last year, it shows that we were thirty students in the increase in the plus side. And again, I attribute that to the things that we're doing in the district, make students feel more welcome and safer, more connected. And that goes back to the presentation we heard from Special Ed a little while ago, and I think if we do this, we'll have even more of that. But, but the good news is we have more students this year than we had last year, and I hope to keep that in mind, so. And that wraps up our reports section of this agenda.
Agenda for July twenty-fourth. Two twenty-five. The motion on that. I'll move on.
I was just gonna say, okay, I'll second to approve it, approve my.
A motion and a second to approve, further discussion. I would say I, I. We don't need a possession, uh, action item, approve building wires for the month of June two or twenty-five.
So there I would refer you to page two oh three, two hundred and three. And I would say you presented in order and in good form. Waiting for more.
Hey, I'm motion to approve.
Okay, the motion line four.
I'll second.
Second nineteen. To prove list of bills and wires in the month of two hundred and one million dollars, further discussion. Mary Ann, I would say I, I oppose. For approval, uh, fiscal year twenty-seven, well, her name is Henry Clan and according to the Minnesota statute two or three, she is taken one, two, three, eight, five, nine, five.
And for that, rather than referring you to the specific page, which is really, really small fun, if you go to the very, very back of your package, packet, and you have this figure paper folded in half. And that is legible without a magnifying glass.
Okay.
Nice, probably, please, fine. And this is something we do pretty much every July, we do it every summer, usually in July. And it's a plan, you know, long terms, long-term facility maintenance plan, the ten-year plan. So you can see on the far right, column is twenty thirty-five. And written into our plan is, is basically a plan to maintain our facilities and to plan for expenditures due to aging or new policies or new codes or issues with the building. And the majority of the things that are done in our plan to be done over the next decade are in that first column, not column, but row, where you see finance codes three forty-seven and three sixty-six. Those deal with environmental concerns in the building. So physical hazard, that can be asbestos abatement for some schools. It could be, uh, environmental health and safety such as airflow or air filtering, uh, those kinds of things, fire safety, indoor air. And then towards the very bottom, you see a really wide row, which deals with finance codes three sixty-eight or three eighty-two or three eighty-four, and they deal with the actual physical building itself, the envelope, hardware, equipment, electricity, flooring, mechanical systems, plumbing and so on. So those are the two areas where we have most of our needs. And so what I can point out is at the very bottom of this page, since this is our expenditure plan, you can see in sort of a brown color, tan color, the total annual ten-year plan expenditure for each column representing a year. So the first column, three hundred and fourteen thousand seven fifty-nine, that is the year we're wrapping up. Next year, we are planning to spend eight hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-two on needs for our facilities. And you can see across the board, the next eight years after that, roughly between, you know, half a million and seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand on the topping, which is in the year twenty thirty-two. We factor in inflation and we factor in anticipated needs. These can change if another need suddenly crops up because of an issue. We might push the plans for twenty thirty-two into twenty thirty-three, let's say. These are our expected expenditures. Then if you turn the page, you can see our expected projected, uh, revenue that we expect to receive from the state. And that's sort of in the middle of the page, you, you see a tan line that says ending fiscal year. And we are expecting those amounts of dollars every year moving forward. And we match some of those dollars with levying and other monies that we get from the state. So, um, and when you get to the next page, which is the more colorful page, that takes a look at that difference between the the levy and what we're given, given from state aid. And basically you want to look at the bottom line, line twenty D, total new law revenue. You can see our ex total expected revenue, anywhere from next year, twenty twenty-six, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars up to, uh, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars for the last of the five years each in these columns. So the funding that I showed you for expenditures, the costs that we're planning for, will be covered largely by the funding from the state. It's all planned out, hopefully, right? Exactly. So I present this ten-year LTFM plan, LTFM plan you for your group, looking for more. We need to approve the chairman.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion. Second by Tina. Who, on your facilities made it in your plan? Further discussion.
I want to thank Chris for his, his work on the, uh, budgeting side of expenditure, anticipating needs. And then thank Chris and Willie for putting together, together this, uh, plan.
Especially, yes, it's nice.
Yeah. You were surprised, is that?
I would say I, I oppose. Okay, miscellaneous, um, I handed out, I had him hand out resolution one twenty-eight, two or twenty-five, just, uh, as a discussion thing. Next meeting.
Um, you guys work for the tribe, right? You, you do too, huh? Well, when you guys run out of leave to come to our meetings, do you have to take a leave, well, pay then to come to our meetings or?
We gotta take our own vacation.
Your own vacation leave?
Yeah, all the hard work I do for you ship and our community, I have to use my own leave, six.
Being, he requested this from the tribal council. And we have members that work in a tribal council. Can we request the same thing for our members as they do their members?
We can just do that here. We don't have to go through them to make the request. I mean, we can just do that here. Like, if we were to approve this, um, I, I had this, a discussion with Willie on this, uh, just to see what we're already giving him. I didn't, I didn't think giving him.
Give a flexible schedule.
He has a flexible schedule and, and, you know, we're, we're not actually giving him, you know, I don't think, right?
Right, and he's not losing anything.
Yeah.
You know, when, when he goes to the meetings and it has to go during the year and give up his day of pay at the school district, he has the option to make that day up any day in the summertime when.
Yeah.
We have three months of summer. So he's unlike you or you or, or Tom, he doesn't lose out. He can come in another day, because those of you who work twelve-month calendar can't do that. Right?
So like you can't, right? I mean, you just have to make it up, right?
Like when I go to training or MSBA, I gotta use vacation pay.
Yeah.
Vacation leave that, that I need for my family. You know, because I have young children. And so I really don't take vacations. I use it for training pretty much.
Yeah. Well, we did negotiate, you know, teachers bargaining unit, he had requested, and they settled on fourteen days that he can be gone and be paid for, and that's part of the agreed upon settlement. He was hoping for more, but the teachers bargaining unit didn't want to give more. They would like him to make up those days in the summer.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't us, it was the bargaining unit, the, the teachers, the union deal, right?
That, that limited him to fourteen, you mean? Right.
Well, yeah, like even if, even if we did do anything, I mean, we can't do anything for them, right? Then we have no say in how they get paid because they were tried.
And I don't want to make it sound like they refused. It was something that we came up with together, fourteen days and we all thought it was fair. It's not like the bargaining unit said, we're not going to give them anymore. It's just that we said, we presented this as an option and they thought it was fair and, uh, we left it at that. So it wasn't like they said that they refused to give them more. It's just that working together, we came up with fourteen days.
Well, I checked on it to you. They said that, well, then, boy, they should ask the sabbatical leave. Is that like a full year off then?
Yeah.
I was like, oh, okay.
They don't get paid, you know, the full amount during that time, but they get things like, um, benefits taken care of in some degree.
I just need some clarification with the bargaining unit. So is that like the committee of board members? Then you got the union, right?
Yep, and the teachers bargaining unit, there were seven or eight who met with us when we would meet and, uh,
A couple of bargaining.
And I believe we'll move there.
So you're saying this should actually be brought up at, at that quality and negotiating?
Yep, and it was.
Oh, I was just that one too the other day and they couldn't get a hold of anybody. So I said, well, I said, I'll, I'll come sit in on that one. That was employees.
Yep, that was for the.
Oh, no, he's a teacher anyway.
That was for the non-teaching staff.
Yeah.
And then Rob is part of the teaching bargaining unit, so. But, uh, I respect, uh, and appreciate the work that Rob does. I do want to say that. And, and he does, uh, you know, to have that connection with the tribe and the school district and TNEC, which he often goes to now, is a, I think, a good thing for the district. Uh, I do like to try to work together. And, uh, I appreciate what he brings to the tribe, the council meetings from the school, and then what he brings back to the school. But, so I think this is fair, but, uh, yeah, I think your question merits response that we could ask for you guys to get some coverage.
Yeah, well, I'll mention that when, when I, I was talking with, uh, the attorney or what's his name?
Plummer?
Phil Plummer?
Our attorney or the tribe.
Plummer, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, I'll mention that while, you know, while, what about, well, well, we have three, right? We have three tribal employees. So, you know, how do we get that to make it fair to them too, you know?
Like I want to go to MAFS, I participate in MISA, I do a lot of things, but forty hours annually, I was like, huh. You know, so I had to accept it. Yep, I had to take the forty annually. Yeah.
You know, I'll mention that then, you know, so. I, you know, I just kind of wanted to have a discussion and the same, I mean, um, I think we're, we're, we're pretty fair. We're, we're given that, what, fourteen days, that fourteen?
Yep, and that's really what, uh, what he had initially asked for.
Yeah.
And, and so the, to, to reiterate, because I think I misspoke earlier when, when I said that the teachers bargaining unit didn't want to give them more. They gave them exactly what he asked for. So, uh, we were the ones probably in the admin side pushing against getting more. We said fourteen is quite a bit for someone who also gets the opportunity to have a flexible.
So then when he's gone those fourteen days, we still got to pay for the sub in there beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, although generally speaking, he doesn't need a sub, so that helps. He doesn't, uh, generally have a classroom like a teacher would. He doesn't, uh, generally have a classroom like a teacher would. He does teach students and he does do presentations and activities with kids, but if he happens to be gone, um, you knew might, technically, then there might be a sub, like you knew might fill in or someone else might cover or Sharon might do more. But to, to clarify, he asked for fourteen and admin agreed, the teachers bargaining unit agrees. And so I believe he got exactly what he did seek in the process. And, uh,
I think what they're talking about here, like it's more or less for him to go to committee things and all, and not necessarily tribal council. Like there's other committee meetings and I think one of the studies for this and that and the wall over Dulu and you know, I, I think that, I think it might have something to do with that. I don't know. I, I think we're fair too. I, I think that's fair. But, you know, they could be fair to you guys too, you know?
I'm not sure. What is he asking for here? Time when like say Tuesday, constantly leading day to, so.
When it's a whole day that he's gone from school, he would like to have professional leave where he is paid still by the district to be gone. And. I'm not sure what he gets paid over there to be honest.
True.
Yeah, they get paid.
They get my, um, I asked about mileage, they don't get mileage.
Um, it doesn't.
They get some kind of pay for.
Stipend.
They get per diem.
It's a salary. Salary, yeah. I don't know if it's like fifty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
Maybe more.
Really? Salary?
Yeah, to become a representative of council member.
I, how much I paid for meeting?
No, no.
What is it?
It's, 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 it's a good chunk. It might be fifty-two.
Yeah. But, uh, there are instances when we provide professional leave to individuals who we send off on training or, you know, a workshop or a conference. And so I do appreciate that he, what he learns in his work with the tribal council, he can bring back to the district and make us a better place because of that. I respect that and I have always appreciated his professionalism and his commitment and his, uh, dedication to the district and the students.
So you're not, there's no action here?
No. Kind of one of the.
But you said there was already some negotiating that took place pertaining to this?
Yep, yep, he had, uh.
So does the, does the tribe know that?
Yes.
Something, okay.
Yep.
So this is.
This was all done in May.
Responded to this?
Yep, this was done in May and we hadn't even begun negotiating yet.
Oh.
In May, also here. And, uh.
This is June tenth.
It was actually signed, I think on June tenth, but it, uh, I was at that meeting in May when they, when they presented it and read it to me. And then, uh, they probably officially signed it.
Yeah, because I know he, was he, I don't know if he's the only rep now on the TNEC, which is the tribal.
Right.
You guys know what that, that TNEC? Tribal.
Tribal. Tribal Nations Education something Committee.
How, how do I get on there?
Yeah, maybe Rob will.
Or just the council members know about it, eh?
That could be. I would ask Rob. I think there's a place for board members from schools or.
So there is a lack of communication there still. Well, you're over there every month, though, you can find out.
You know, Vendo was, was that person? So I don't know if he took over or not.
Right, exactly.
Came in to submit and shared some. It was good to have somebody who was connected.
Yep, I think it's very good. I think that his, his work on TNEC will inform us more, but also represent us with TNEC more as well. Right, so.
Well, as long as he's already, sounds like he's good. We responded to this and, and then now maybe we can respond to that. But I did find out, I found a resolution that include seven days a year. I got a copy of that resolution. So if we want to go to professional development, doesn't cover these, these monthly meeting. But, but it'll, you know.
Our MSA, MSBA leadership, our NESA.
Yeah, professional development.
They're on your leave anyway.
Yeah, because I need to use that like for my kids' appointments and stuff.
Yeah.
So I did your copy. It was a hole and I think like, which rather, pretty growing, yeah. A reservation, so I got it at that office, but. But I was getting, but yeah, if you could negotiate and say, hey, you want a little quick quote? We want some, we want our.
Good looking out, Chairman.
Since Mike reached the, since that hours back for him. One o'clock. Think of himself that leader.
And he goes speaking that Latin again, Chris.
So, yeah, let him know that. Mr. Chairman, go advocate for ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I was just, I don't know, I was over there for some other thing and he called me up and, you know, come on up here and visit for a little bit. So I went, you know,
Then were you gonna bring up Pennsylvania or did?
Yep, I already did.
Oh, okay, cool, so.
Yeah, yeah. Is there anything you wanted to add?
I, I missed what you added, so I don't want to be.
Oh, yeah.
We got to see the slides, you basically. That's.
Because, uh, some of the things I liked were that, like all that old system of development, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't what we are today and it never really fit well here anyway. You know, so I noticed how our, our summer schools are really, the kids love summer school. It's a totally different vibe, you know, even the way the, the teachers like, you know what I mean? It's like, how can we get our regular school, maximum school?
We've been talking about that. Let's make the whole year, school year like.
Next year.
Yeah.
And I think this is what this will do.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's something that popped into my head, so, yeah, cool. Glad everybody else. I think. So I got it. It's compound, it's the biggest day of the year, so.
He has to get going.
It's your, yeah, it's your Christmas, huh, or your, uh, it's your Christmas or your Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Radio.
Yeah.
Been seeing all the trucks heading over.
Yeah, I thought it was already.
It looks like they got a map on there. Okay, I'll get a motion to, uh.
I think I heard the motions from the corner over there.
I'll motion to adjourn, Chairman.
Okay. All.
I'll second.
Second by State. I'll always say aye.
Aye.
I pose. Okay, it's very bad. Do what's happened?
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Good one, man.
Yeah.